We have everyone with Brenda and she will be here. Brenda's here. We have everybody here. First item up will be to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
From everybody. First item up will be to approve the meeting agenda. We did have an addition of... We had to add the levy limitation certification report. So that's the business items other than that. We made a motion for the agenda. Mr. and Mrs. Brenda? You have a second?
I think a second.
Ms. Stacy? Any discussion on the agenda? No discussion. All those who favor approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same. Motion carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Not hearing anybody, so we'll move on. May I have one acknowledgement here? Ms. Lindsay Forsgren for helping organize the panelists for the Career Fair. She's with Rotary. Anything to add there, Brian?
Yeah, thank Mrs. Forsgren for her help along with Mrs. Leach of getting panelists for the Career Fair. And then Mrs. Jonaschewski will talk more about her report.
So we have the audit presentation. This is Courtney, correct?
Yes. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. So I will share my screen here. It looks like I'm not able to share. Do you guys all have copies of the executive summary? Or can you allow me to share?
We'll allow you to share in a moment.
Okay. While we wait the back, I'll just introduce myself briefly. My name is Courtney Richmond. I'm an Audit Senior Manager with IBALEY based in our Fargo North Dakota office. And this evening, we're going to go through the executive summary, which really is a high-level summary of the district's financial results for the June 30th, 2023 year-end audit. Looks like I can share now, so... Can you all see it okay?
Yep.
Wonderful. Okay. So to kick things off, first, we will talk about the audit results and any findings. So our first slide here talks about the audit opinion. So on the first bullet point, you can see that the district received a clean audit opinion. The technical term for this is an unmodified opinion. And essentially means the financial statements are prepared in accordance with standards, and we did not identify any material misstatements throughout the audit process. And now, the second bullet point here is to just caveat that this is merely our professional opinion. We do not test 100% of the transactions of the district throughout the audit process. Instead, we use a risk-based approach to kind of drive our testing. But through the audit process, you know, we did not identify any material misstatements. The next slide here is to talk about the audit of the federal funds. So anytime a school district or any entity spends more than $750,000 of federal money, that triggers a separate compliance-based audit over the federal grant money. So for 2023, you can kind of see on the right-hand side there, the district spent roughly $2.1 million of federal money. So based on this testing, we did test the ESTER program, which was a COVID-specific grant. And happy to report the last bullet point here that shows that the district received an unmodified or a clean audit opinion over that program as well. So even though overall, the district received a clean audit opinion, that doesn't mean that there's not other internal control deficiencies and things that we note throughout the audit process. So that's what's listed here on this findings slide. So there's three main areas we look at, the first being the financial statements. And there were three findings identified. The first being preparation of financial statements, including the schedule of expenditures of federal warrants. This just has to do with the fact that IBALEY prepared the full year-end financial statements with all of the required footnote disclosures. So this is something that's very common, not only with school districts, but really with any smaller organization. The second finding is material journal entries. So throughout the audit process, we do come in and propose some adjustments at the end of the year. So that's what that finding relates to. And the last one in the financial statement section is segregation of duties. So just due to the smaller, you know, finance staff within the district, you're not able to completely separate every financial responsibility. So that's what leads to that finding. All three are very common for school districts, and all three is something that you've had in the past. So nothing new to report there. Under the federal warrants, there was one finding that was identified for 2023. There was improper supporting documentation for just one expenditure that we selected for testing. And so that's what caused that specific finding. The last area we focus in on is Minnesota-specific state compliance. So there were three findings identified, and all of them related to student activity-related information. So the first one was inadequate approval of a student activity dispersment. So there are specific rules about a student approving, as well as an advisor and then either like a building principal or superintendent. So there was an instance where there was missing one of those approvals. The second finding there is inactive student activity funds. So anytime there's a group that doesn't have any activity, whether it's receipts in or dispersments out, really those funds should be closed out. So there was instances where there was just no activity and those groups were left open. The last finding there was lack of supporting documentation for an expenditure for one of your student activity funds. So there just wasn't an invoice or something that we could view to support one of the transactions tested. Next, we'll jump into the financial information of the district. So our first slide here is the cash and investments. So this is showing you the cash and investments in thousands for the last 10 years. So you can see there at the end of 2023, it did have an increase. That increase was primarily just due to timing of payments right at year end. So you did see a jump there from 2022 to 2023. This does not include anything that's in your capital projects fund, since that is set aside specifically for construction-related expenses. Next, we'll talk about some general fund information. So our first slide here is the ADM SERB. So this essentially is your student counts. And we like to show this before we dive into the numbers, because the number of students you have is really what drives the revenue that you get from the state and from federal sources. So overall, very consistent of one student from the previous year. So our next slide is the budget to actual within the general fund. So this is the main numbers page that we'll focus on. So you can see the far left there shows you the original and final budgeted amounts for the fiscal year. The third column there is the actual results. And on the far right, that shows any variance between that final budget and the actual for the year. So overall, on the revenue side, the district did receive approximately 1.6 more in revenue than you budgeted for, which was within 14% of the final budget. That was largely due to one of the federal grants that was COVID-specific that the district just didn't budget for. So that's what caused that increase there. On the expenditure side, you also spent more than you budgeted by 1.4 million, which was within 13.6% of the budget. Again, this relates to that federal grant. You just didn't budget for those specific expenses that you brought the revenue in for. Overall, kind of the key takeaway from this slide is that net change in fund balance towards the bottom of your page. So overall, you did bring in more revenue than you spent. So that increased your fund balance in the general fund by roughly 207,000 for the year, leaving you with a year-end fund balance of right around 4.3 million for the general fund. So what does this positive fund balance mean? Essentially, it contributes to a favorable bond rating if you do need to issue additional bonds. If you're able to invest any of that money, you can earn additional interest income and investment income. But lastly, it really just offers the district kind of a cushion in case you have any expenses that come about that you weren't planning for or any revenue shortfalls. Our next slide talks about the five different fund balance categories. We won't go in depth on each of these means, but our following slides kind of break down that 4.3 million of fund balance into these different buckets. So this changes in fund balances slide shows you the different categories of the fund balance at the end of the year. So anything that's listed as restricted is specifically restricted or set aside by the state of Minnesota for a designated purpose. Anything that's assigned is decided by the school district. So at the end of the year, you didn't have anything that was assigned. And then that last line there, the unassigned, really that's kind of what's left over. So that's that additional cushion that you have for additional expenditures or revenue shortfalls. The next slide breaks that same information down into graph format. So you can kind of see how you've been trending over the last 10 years. So overall, that red section there is that restricted by the state portion, and then the blue is that unassigned. So overall, you can see growth in the district's fund balance from 2022 to 2023. Next, we'll talk about some recommendations regarding fund balance. So the district-specific policy is to have an unassigned general fund fund balance between 22% to 25% of your annual budget. So that target amount for 2023 was between 2.7 million and 3.1. We do also just include on this slide a third-party recommendation from the Government Finance Officers Association, and they recommend having no less than two months' worth of unassigned fund balance or 16.67%. So our next slide shows you kind of where you land based on your approved policy. So those red lines in the middle of the page really are showing you kind of that threshold that you want to be within. But overall, you can see for the last three years, you have exceeded that minimum that you've established or that policy you've established overall. Lastly, we'll talk about just a couple other funds of the district, the first being the Community Service Fund. So this slide is really showing the year-end fund balance for the last 10 years in graph format. So you do see a slight increase there in 2023, but overall, kind of varies year to year based on the activities that you have within that fund. Our next slide shows the same information, but specific to the Food Service Fund. That red line that you can see, that actually represents the maximum fund balance that you should have, which is based on the expenditures in that fund. So you can see for the last two years, you have exceeded that maximum. This is very common, and this is primarily due to the fact that the previous two school years, all meals were reimbursed by the federal government as free meals. So you did see an influx in the federal aid you received. So overall, that increased your fund balance as well. And then lastly, I just have a slide here for what's next and some other topics. There are some tax credits that are out there that are now available to governments for construction projects and anything that's energy efficiency-related, so vehicles and things like that. So if the district is planning anything along those lines, you can certainly reach out to us and we can let you know kind of different tax credits that are available to you. And then lastly, just ongoing communication with IBALEY. So we do have a website. There's various online publications specific for school districts. We have various webinars throughout the year, and then you have access to us throughout the year. If you do have any questions, you can certainly give us a call. So that's all I have for you this evening. Does anybody have questions on anything I covered here tonight?
Anybody have questions? I don't hear any.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it, and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thanks.
And this will be the business items later for approving. All right. Move on. We have a truth and taxation presentation. Mr. Martinez, would you like that?
I'll come over here. Welcome to Truth and Taxation. We call this meeting the Rudy Show, because you will be hearing a lot from me today. And that's okay. Couple of things to note. I brought my cowboy boots and then my sweet new hearing piercing. And I got them at the same time, so... Do you like my thing, Mr. Larson? All right. So Truth and Taxation, we do this every year, and essentially is to kind of just show you guys where a lot of the money from our levy comes from, what we assign it towards. We partner up with MREA. We are... We're a member of Minnesota Rural Education Association. And they put out these really cool slides that we like to take and then plug in our own information. It gives a lot of information, really, on how levies in the state of Minnesota work. So I'm not going to go through the entire 3D slides. Instead, I'm going to take you to very unique ones that I think are highlighted for our district. So if you go down, please. Keep going. This is just the footprint of our district. I like to show it, just so you guys can see really the square footage that we have. It's as simple as just going into Google Maps and typing ISD 548, and it'll give you the entire footprint. So very cool thing to note. You'll hear me talk about it later on. But in the majority of our footprint, these little blue things sometimes are our friends, and sometimes they are not. So let's keep going to other slides. Okay. So Truth and Taxation, two major requirements. Tax statements for all the property owners in the district. And two, we have to have a public hearing, which is what we are having right now. We'll keep going down. Keep going down. Keep going down. Perfect. Right here. So in the entire state of Minnesota, when we look at how we collect taxes, there are three major sectors that the Minnesota Department of Management and Budget kind of like to allocate. So if you think about all the taxes that are generated in the state of Minnesota, 30% are collected from local nonschools. So that would be your cities or any other public entity. 63% of all the taxes in the state come from the state. So gas, tobacco, all that good stuff. And school districts generate about 7% of all the taxes that are collected in the state of Minnesota. Right? Now, when you look at who spends all of the taxes that are collected, you see that school districts account for 24%, where state accounts for 40%, and local non-school accounts for 36%. So a little bit of a disparity that we'll dive into. So go ahead, Em. This one talks about the funding formula. It talks about truly the lack of funding the school districts receives and why levies are important. So the main resource of revenue that school districts receive are from students, your pinpoint units, right? This line here talks about if we would have taken CPI or inflation since 2003 and let the funding formula grow with inflation, we should be receiving 8,637 per student. That is not the case. Why? Because legislation likes to set that funding formula. Sometimes they tell us they're going to give us 2%, sometimes they tell us they're going to give us 4%, whatever it is. So you can see that there's about a disparity of 1,282 per student that we don't receive. Okay? Thanks to the people that we vote in office. All right. Two things happened in the last legislative session. The first one being that in fiscal year '24, the school districts received 4% funding formula due to the surplus at the state budget. Second is that now they recognize that there is a big disparity. So instead, they said, hey, you know what? Why don't we tie your funding formula to inflation? And it all sounded very good. And then they realized that inflation was at about 7%, and they said, but we'll cap it at 3%. So moving forward, the majority of the state or the majority of the school districts in Minnesota will receive 5% because that's what they want to give us. They tried to tie it to inflation, but they knew that it was very costly for the state. So they said, we'll tie it to inflation with a cap at 3%. However, if inflation goes down to 1%, guess how much they're going to pay us? 1%. So they put a ceiling, not a floor. So again, big disparity in funding schools. So we'll keep going down. Okay. This talks about the different levies that are out there in the state. So if you look at the red line, those are cities and other non-school local governments. You can see that from 1992 to 2006, the taxes that they levy for against their constituents is almost triple, where school districts have barely doubled. Right? And this is very apparent when you go to other school districts, right? Speaking from experience, and residents get very upset when they receive their tax statements because they see that their taxes go up, but they don't realize how to read the tax statement. They don't understand that you have to first understand what your house is classified. You need to understand what your market value is, and you need to understand what is taxing you. So in a neighboring school district that I'm helping out, it happened to be the case that the city imposed a significant tax increase, and they thought it was the school. So they blamed the school, not necessarily knowing that it's for their own utilities. So lots of those things happen. But we have the Truth and Taxation meeting to really break all those myths. All right. We'll keep going. Okay. One of the big things in the Truth and Taxation is to disclose to you guys some of our operating budget. So our operating budget for the current school year '23, '24 is as presented. This is the budget that we adopted back in June. We are projecting revenues of about $11 million and expenses of about $12 million with a deficit spending of about $791. Okay? Quiz time. Can anybody tell me what that deficit is related to? Hey! That's what it is. So yes, we're on a deficit spend, but it's surplus money that we have in the rainy day fund that we allowed and allocated for this project. And that's what that... That's what this particular budget shows on general fund. On our Food Service Fund, the reason why I'm projecting a 50% deficit is because I have no idea what the reimbursement rate for this new free meal program is. We know we're getting free meals. We just don't know at 1% yet. So there's three components of it. The state pays us upfront, then they turn around and they build the federal government. And if there's a surplus, then they distribute amongst all the school districts. So at the end of the year, there's going to be a big adjustment. Right now, we are about 90% to what our expenditures are in terms of reimbursement. So I'm guessing sometime at the end of the year, we're going to get the additional 10% that we're missing, and that's going to go from month to month. So to be safe, we underprojected revenue and overprojected expenses. Very, very common strategy to do. Our community education, we've been doing really well here. We have about $18,000 in surplus. And really, that has to do with the efficiency of our Club Bikes program. It is very successful, and it is very popular, and it generates significant amount of income over the summer months. So kudos to both guys and all the other community programs. Debt service, we see a deficit of $132,000. And the reason why I'm doing this is because every single year when we levy, the county pays us at 105%. And they do that because they know that interest rates on your bonds fluctuate. And over so many years, you build up this additional 5% that they pay you, and it builds up. And at the end of a year or so, they understand that if you're not using it, they will actually negative impact you on the future levy. So what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to spend that surplus that we have in our debt service. Okay? OPEB, we don't have OPEB anymore. Our trust is our scholarship. As you can see there, we're pretty, pretty good on how we manage our scholarships. I would like to see that grow even more, and we're reaching out to community members so they can contribute more. And we've had a few other businesses and community members step up to create scholarships for the school district. Activities is all of our fundraiser accounts, all of our certain activity accounts. Again, that is a really, really well, healthy program. You can see that sometimes we fundraise up to $219,000, but we also spend it, especially when we take those school trips. Students put in a big effort to fundraise, but they also cost a lot of money and a lot of effort. So this is our total operating budget. We are projecting about $15 million. We're going to spend about $16 million for a total deficit of $1 million. But then again, we knew that this was coming. We approved it back in June, and a lot of that has to do with the multi-use building project that we have coming up. Okay? Any questions regarding our operating budget? All right, we'll move on. Okay. So where does our money come from, right? And you can see that I have the district notes there of some of the two major things that are impacting our operating budget. Multi-use and just the free reimbursement meal program through the state. But here's the breakdown of where all our dollars come from. 62% comes from state aid, that funding formula that we talked about. 6% comes from federal programs. That's mainly our title program, my food service revenue, and a few other federal grants. ELSA, which is an early childhood program. 30% accounts for our levy. So that's what we're discussing today, that 30% in that pie chart. Okay? Other 1%, that is all of the activity tickets that we collect over the year, fundraising, entry tickets into games and all that stuff. So it's very minimal. And same thing with sales. A lot of it comes through our concession stand and all that stuff. So very, very little. We'll talk about the 30%. Go ahead, Em. Keep going. Okay. So again, this is what we talked about of people being misinformed regarding the Truth and Taxation. Step one is you need to know about your parcels classified. Okay? Step two, every spring when they send you that proposed property taxes, it's the time that you have to... If you see any discrepancies, you have to go to your county assessor, and then that's where you dispute the differences. Right now, if you get your tax statement and you're trying to go hunt down Weinstein at the county, he's going to say, sorry, you're too late. Okay? So you have to be informed about the timing of this particular event. Okay? So in the spring, actually, I think I received my proposed property taxes already. But you're going to get them, and those proposals are the ones that are going to pay for the following year. So that proposed statement will reflect for the levy that we're proposing here that will be payable 2024. Okay, go ahead, Em. Okay? Effective tax rates, you can see all the different things. Go ahead. Go ahead. Okay. Big thing that happened in Minnesota, two legislative sessions ago, so 40 years, they introduced a bill called the Ag to School Tax Credit. And really, this was to help a lot of our farmers. And what that did is they took the burden away from our farmers, and the state paid the difference. Right now, that bill or that incentive is up to 70%. So if a farmer is paying $100 to a tax levy due to the school, the state will cover 70%, and the farmer only pays 30%. Okay? Contrary to everything that has happened in our area about those construction bonds, ours is always an example. Okay, go ahead. And again, this just tells you what the percentages of that incentive by the state. Keep going. We'll keep going. Okay, go up. Perfect. So MREA does all this analytical work, and they put this demographic map to kind of show you where you rank against all the different school districts in the state. This Act to School incentive is huge. And you can see that in our school district, we are above the median. So the state is contributing to the farmers in Pelican Rapids to lower their tax bill significantly. Keep that in mind, because I'll actually give you the exact number of what that is. Go down. Okay. I'm not going to go... This is the different breakouts, which they call tiers. But essentially, it's the defining formula where the state decides if it's going to be state aid or if they're going to tax your resident. So I'm not going to go into that. It gets pretty detailed. So we'll keep going down. Okay? Perfect. So tax bait composition of our school district, right? So remember the picture where I showed the footprint, the outline of the school district? And then I pointed out a bunch of blue dots in there? Okay? That tells us who... That tells us who pays those taxes in our school district. Okay? Our school district footprint is comprised of fifty-one percent seasonal rent. Do you think they pay a lot of taxes to fund our school? They do not. Certain levies they do, like, uh, construction, but they do it by an operating referendum, they do not. Okay? So we need to, we need to educate our legislators and we need to get this overturned to say, no, they gotta pay their fair share. And I'm glad I'm on record. Okay? We'll go down. Okay, we'll keep going down. Okay, perfect. So we talked about who does pay taxes, right? So do you guys remember five years ago, we had an operating referendum? Where we went to the public and we said, hey, we need additional operating funds because we've already cut a million dollars from our budget, and we need additional funding. At that point in time, we went out to the public and we said that we needed three hundred, three hundred and thirteen, uh, three hundred and fifteen dollars per pupil to help make those differences at that time. Okay? Even with that pass, we are still below what other districts in the state charge their constituents. The medium operating referendum in this, in the state is five hundred and four, where we are at about three hundred and fifteen. So yes, we have an operating referendum, but it's, we're not even at the midpoint, at the average around the state. Go ahead, Em. Another piece, okay? Another piece that they look at is they look at your property value. Okay? And then remember that fifty-one percent of our entire district is composed of what? Okay? That red number is not good. Why is it not good? It means that we are very, very high in property value, but not all properties get taxed the same. We are one of the wealthiest counties, or I should say, school districts in the state. Yet now, a lot of our residents or our constituents of this school district pay their share. So ride to your legislators. Knock on their door. Write an email, send them texts, all that good stuff. Okay? We'll keep going. I don't know if working guys with this, keep going down. Okay? Now we get to the good stuff. Okay? Proposed tax levy for twenty-four. You can see that for the general fund, for our levy, we're proposing one million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and fifty-six and twenty-three cents. That's an increase from last year of fifteen thousand, or about point eight-nine percent. Our community fund education, um, about two hundred thousand. That's an increase of forty-one thousand dollars. That increase right here is solely due to a new legislative statute to increase funding in early childhood education. So a lot of those forty-one, forty-one thousand dollars is going to our ECFE and our school readiness programs. Our general debt, two point two million dollars. It's an increase, uh, increase of about twenty-three hundred dollars, about point ten percent. And we have no other liability. Okay? So today, when you actually approve the levy limit, this is a time where we actually say the dollar. So whoever makes that motion, please remember to make a motion saying four million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, ninety dollars and thirty-two cents.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just cause op-ed is coming a few times, can you explain op-ed debt service?
Yeah, so op-ed debt service has to do with tier one and tier two teachers in the state. So any teacher that was hired before nineteen eighty-nine was grandfathered into what they call an op-ed benefit that within we then passed on to the state. We retired that last teacher in our teacher contract four years ago.
Okay.
So that is why we don't have any more op-ed liability.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay? So egg to school credit, right? So the school helps subsidize the burden into our farmers with a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Seventy percent. Pretty cool. Okay, so again, remember today, please remember this number when you make a motion to pass our truth in taxation and we set our levy limit. Okay? Any other questions, you guys? That is your truth in taxation. The last, uh, slide is just, it's in the contact if you have any questions. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on, we have three presentations. Mr. Stevens, would you like to start with the DOT temporary rights?
There should be two slides.
Yep.
I'll try not to move around as much as this. That's why I have a pointer. So this, um, presentation has to do with the Highway Fifty-Nine project that we've all heard about coming up in the summer of twenty-four. And the shovel ready by the time the frost goes out, hopefully, end of March, let's hope. So this is the front of our building. The, the high school is right here, we're sitting about right here, right now. So this is the changes to our drop-off lane. Fourth Avenue, straight out there, will be our new starting point. Right now, we start about here. So we'll come in here, hopefully they'll turn and not go into Mr. Corvus' office, and proceed down to, uh, door one, two, three, four, and five. And then they've added, per our request, six parking spots there. For longer-term parking. Right now, it's more of a, we call it a drop-off lane. We would like to see more, but this dotted long area here is a sidewalk that they're putting back in that they used to have. It was taken out with our project, and now it's getting put back in. So we'll, we'll gain the sidewalk, a longer drop-off, parking. The, uh, the drop-off lane is, I, I measured it, it's the exact same width as what we have. It's twenty feet from, from curb to curb. This dotted line that extends all the way along the front of the high school is the construction, um, area. And that's what you're okaying tonight, is that area for right, temporary right-to-contract is what it is. So they're allowed to come on the school district's property, basically up to the building, and, and do their necessary work. There's also, is another area down in here, which is, um, school district owns this. We refer to it as Lake Weasner down here, but that's the bike, uh, the walking bike path. And so that includes that, and also the, um, of course, the, the parking lot here that would extend out over here. We have three separate things. Any questions on that? The state came in and they did their surveys, and then they, they contracted a company. I meant with the individual. Went over all this stuff. They, they started here and they went all the way north to all the commercial properties. And that they have to do this with every property on Broadway.
Turner, do you have any specific safety concerns with any of the areas or proposals?
Um, no, I, I do think that this coming straight off of Fourth Avenue is gonna be better.
Yep.
If you notice, they don't want us to turn left now. Everybody does. But right here is a left-hand turn lane. So, so that's added.
Yeah.
All the crosswalks are bump outs, so it shortens the distance. And I was told that they're gonna put much brighter, better, um, warning signs, warning lights. Now we have just the sign that, that lights up. And they're gonna, they showed me what they are, and then they are much better than, than what we have. So they'll have those, so those distances. This whole area really changes, um, when they dig this out. The other problem that we have, if you noticed in the spring, we have this low area that is icy and is a nightmare. This, they gave me the grades, this will all drain back into these drains right here, so we will not have that. Plus, this walkway is elevated above that, you know, um, roadway. So all that, you wanna go to the next one? Okay, so this is third, it's Fire Hall, uh, School. So this continue on our, our lot here. Obviously, there'll be new sidewalk on that side too, but that, uh, it's a shared path, but that's a sidewalk. And it continues over here. So all this area will be tore up. We are working on getting this changed. Do not like the way that, that sidewalk goes, that's a neck. There's no way you can put that with a screen screen. So we, we're, we have a little arm wrestling match with, uh, the consultants on that, but we'll get it taken care of. So one thing that, uh, will happen, just for your information, when they shut down this, shut down Broadway, as soon as they, they start, they're gonna start south down to the main intersection, get that wrong, we won't put in. Then they're coming this way. About June-ish, end of June, they'll be in front of the high school. So when they shut this off, they gotta reroute traffic, and they've been in contact with us on that and what we're gonna do. Originally, they were gonna go down to Great Northern Road. They feel that's too narrow, so a lot of the traffic will come right behind the high school. You know, the, the bear truck traffic, they wanna reroute, you know, if you remember when the water main broke, it went way up to twenty-one, back around, all that. They still wanna do that, but the local traffic will be, a lot of it will be covered up. So then that changes our bus drop-off, is what we're looking at. Some, we always wanna make sure that that's the number one safety concern taken care of, so. But then this road is shut down. So if that does become a drop-off, there's still traffic on that, on that road, so. Gonna be a big project. There'll be a lot of inconveniences, but when it's all done, there'll be variants. So this'll be on one of your approvals for today.
Was all discussion had and just come to a dead end regarding like a underpass, you know, with the bike path going there? I mean, that there's no way that the state would contribute any amount or anything to partner with that as a safety concern for all the usage of the kids crossing at the different crosswalks there?
It would make sense to do that next year, you know.
When they're doing the street project.
So if you wanna go back to that other one. So what you're talking about is maybe putting an underpass, and this has been brought up many times. And, and we've talked, I, we haven't really got into a hard discussion about that. Just the fact that, uh, Broadway from the high school to the motel is, is the, the biggest concern right now. And there's a lot of moving parts with that they want to get taken care of. But yeah, that'll definitely be something that will be pushed for. I, I would think the city would really push for it too. And if you look at elevations, you know, they're, they're proposing a sidewalk on both sides of, of Broadway going all the way. I, I'm not sure how far's south on the west side, but, um, you know, you still have the, the current path. But yeah, it'll be something that should definitely be looked at.
Is that, that's another question, I guess, like with, with the project in front of the school out here, are they gonna do anything with the grade? Because basically, when you're coming from downtown, you know, you're kinda going up, and then we have that crosswalk, where you're coming up the hill. And same, when you're coming from the south, you're kinda coming up the football, you kinda come over that little hill, and there's a crosswalk again, or where the kids cross to go to the elementary school. So the line of sight is not good at either place for the kids crossing the street. And if you're not familiar with coming into Pelican, you know, then being able to have a good amount of distance and...
Right, right. I don't know the exact, um, I could probably look back at some emails that I got from, but the distance, you know, the, the elevation drop from here to here, um, they can't change it too much because you have these current houses right here. On our sites, the grades are bad because it's ways back to the buildings. That was talked about a lot, especially when you're traveling from the south going north, and it's low light, like in the morning now. You look, you're looking downtown, and I, I find myself doing it too. I have to be very conscious when I'm coming in front of the school in the morning, just to pay attention, because you can't see, it's so dark. Better street lights, you're gonna have that too. And there will be way better lighting than what we have now. So. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Janice Chesky, is current tech ed?
Mr. Corvus asked me to present on our current tech ed program. Just wanted to give you, um, a little overview of what we're currently doing, and then a couple updates on what we're looking at here for next semester and next year as well. You wanna keep going, I'm wondering. Career tech ed is near and dear to me for three reasons. One, I was a career and tech ed teacher myself. Two, we are very fortunate to have really great teachers in this department, including, um, Mrs. King. And then three, it's just to highlight this white part that I have here, and I think this is the most important part of career and tech ed. It just gives kids a pathway to either full secondary education or career exploration, and gives them transferable workplace skills. And, um, we've had a lot of kids, I think, that have decided that there's some careers that are interesting to them based on the classes that they've, they've taken. Next slide, please. This wheel is just kind of a depiction of all the different areas that encompass career and tech ed, and I highlighted in white the ones that we currently offer. So ag, food and natural resources, architecture and construction, business management and administration, finance, health science, and, um, marketing. The ones in yellow are ones that we are looking to expand. So education and training, I am hoping to possibly add, um, early childhood next year for us at the high school. And then transportation, distribution, and logistics. Mr. Corvus and I just met with M. State, and we're gonna add CBL here this next semester. So two really great opportunities to continue to expand, um, our career and tech ed program. The next slide gives you an overview of what our CTE department looks like right now. So we have business, industrial tech, ag, science, health, and, um, facts. Business is taught by Mrs. King. She has computer classes for seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. Accounting one and two, personal finance. And personal finance has actually become a required course for kids in twenty years too.
Next year's incoming freshman.
Next year's incoming freshman, yeah, that'll be a requirement. Intro to business, and then business computer apps. Industrial tech is taught by Mr. Marsh. He also has an introduction class for grades seven, eight, and nine. Robotics, digital photography, CAD, which is computer-aided drafting. Woods one and two. Ag science is taught by Mr. Larson. He has welding. Ag science for ninth through twelfth graders. Small engines, environmental science, electricity. And then ag occupations, which is a chance for students really to go out in the community and, um, work. And then in health and facts, we have CNA, EMT, living skill seven, and then cosmetology one and two. And then the last slide is kinda wanted to show you, um, there are requirements to become program-approved in CTE. And so our CTE teachers, Mr. Marsh, Mr. Larson, and Mrs. King, jump-started the advisory board again this fall. And so that includes themselves, um, Mrs. Leage and myself. And then they invited industry and community members to join this board, to kind of really give them an idea of what is, um, industry standard. Give them some suggestions on what, um, you could improve in the department. And so this is just the local business members that they have, but this is one part of their program approval. And it gives them access to Perkins Funds. So Perkins Funds gives us, um, thirty percent, um, revenue to... So Perkins Funds gives us 30% revenue to use for staffing and supply. So I attended this in the fall here, and they did a really great job taking them around to their different classrooms, and then leading some discussions on what they'd like to see in the departments themselves. Questions about CTE?
Any questions? Mary Ernie, thank you.
It'll take me just a second to connect here with Becky. Hi Becky, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can. Go ahead and get your, I'll share my screen here with you and get your presentation open. All right.
Okay, I'm going to be going over our World's Best Workforce summary and our Achievement Integration Progress Report. And this is all based on data from the last school year. You can turn to the next slide. So the first World's Best Workforce goal is that 75% of students are ready for kindergarten based on teacher assessment. That again is our target, our actual was 92%. The second goal is 75% of third graders showing a 50% student growth percentile on star reading from fall to spring. And we were very close on that when we came in at 73%. Our third goal is actually the same as the first goal of our Achievement and Integration. And these goals have two parts. So 3.1 is increasing our reading proficiency rates of our free and reduced meal students by 3% a year. Our target for reading was 43.3%. Our actual was 38.3, but our state, the statewide rate was 32.6. So we did remain above the statewide percentage even though we didn't achieve our target. The next one is going to be goal 3.2. That's going to be the same thing, except now we're looking at math. And we're looking at MCA proficiency rates, again of our free and reduced lunch population. Our target was 34.3%, and that was our actual result. So we did meet that goal, and we also were higher than the statewide percentage on that one as well. The fourth goal is increasing graduates attending post-secondary. This one is about having students graduating being career and college ready. Our target was 60%. We had actually 71%. Next year, what we'll be doing is, the new goal will be 100% of all graduates will have a plan to either attend post-secondary, military, or the workforce. So that one will change up a little bit next year. And our final World's Best Workforce goal is that our graduation rate will exceed the statewide rate. And we did do that again this year. This is our graduates of 2022. We had 90.8, and statewide was 83.6. Any questions on any of that? The next part then is our Achievement Integration Progress Report. This is the third and final year of that, our 2020 to 2023 school year plan. So the first couple of slides are going to be the same, oh, excuse me. We have three types of goals with achievement integration. They're about closing achievement gaps, equitable access to effective and diverse teachers, and racial and economic integration. So our first goal is again going to be what we looked at before with increasing the reading proficiency. The next slide will be the same thing, that's just our same math goal. The second goal for A&amp;I is increase student access to more effective and diverse teachers by continuing to provide staff development in the areas of culture, race, ethnicity, and poverty. So another piece to this, on the next slide you'll see, is that we have something that's kind of a grow your own, where you're working within to try to have some of your own students working towards teaching degrees so that your demographics start to match a little more of your student population. So this, I believe, was the third year, last year was the third year of our Intro to Education course. We had 16 students complete that course. And the other piece of it is our staff development. We had two sessions by Derek Francis, and 100% of teachers attended at least one of those two sessions. The third goal is around our cultural immersion activities and events. Mr. Brugman will talk about this area.
Any questions on what Becky's talked about so far?
Okay, so the third part is kind of where I come into, into the picture. And that is when our schools make connections with the other schools in our district. And I think that on the next slide is the different groups that we go and actually make that student to student, teacher to teacher kind of contacts through different activities. It can be through our Spanish class that does a group activity with Underwood and Fergus Falls. It can be us going to student career fair, kind of taking like the ninth grade to a career fair. Last year, we took a group of students to Powhatan in Detroit Lakes. Those types of connections. I bring a group of mentors over to Frezzi once a month to, again, just kind of interact. But the big thing that we started to do last year that we wanted to kind of accomplish here in the next couple of years is make it less, less work basically for our school district. Because it just seems like we were creating all of this and all that to make these connections. We're bringing students to a lot of different areas just to bring them to these areas. And I still, I feel that way with the Frezzi. The Frezzi teacher in the elementary really likes it. It is a cool experience when I bring them over there, but we do take them out of school, and that gets to be a lot. So we're decreasing that. And one of the ways we're decreasing that, I think on the next slide, is, let's go one more. There, is, we're going to this year kind of create our first culture fair. And what we're going to do is invite each of those different districts, our schools that are part of our program, to come to Pelican Rapids. We're also going to send out, hey, if you have students that would like to do a presentation for other students about some aspect of the culture. And we're going to do the same thing with our students. I mean, we are the diverse group, kind of like that. So we have a lot of different cultures. And what I'm planning on doing is, starting in January, I will send out, hey, here's the plan. Kind of like recruit, advertise. Is there an aspect of your culture that you would like to shine a light on? Now, examples, a kinsier, I think would be cool to have a group. Talk about kinsier. I think it would be really interesting if a group would talk about just daily prayer in the Muslim faith. Okay, what that's all about. Something as simple as, I'm hoping we can get somebody from like the Detroit Lakes area that's Native American that can talk about riceing. I know my brother-in-law's a rice-er and stuff like that. Just those types of activities. And then really just kind of, you know, if we're not getting that interest right away because they're a little embarrassed, me going out there and, hey, girls, or hey, guys, why don't you just do this? And really kind of try to make that connection. One of the things I really try to do with the A&amp;I program is focus the light on other kids that aren't normally like out there in the public, you know. Like non-athletes and stuff like that. I just, like the ones I bring over to Frezzi, girls that, they're all girls this year, that just really aren't a part of any of our other groups for the most part. And so I just kind of say, hey, why don't you, why don't you do this? This would be good for you. And then they go out and get some of their friends. And so it's a great opportunity to get more people to be a part of what we do at Pelican Rapids. So that's kind of like our big thing. Now, if we go back one slide? So we're just kind of, this was, I think after each of our events, we do a little survey with different people, and we have our outcomes. We want students to let us know if, being a part of an activity, this is our students and other students, whether it does change your perception. Because that's basically what we're trying to do with this integration, is just share culture. And more importantly, kind of show that, hey, we're all people that have a lot of the same concerns, a lot of the same desires and wants and needs and stuff like that. And so over the, kind of like the, what would you say, experiences, we're seeing that there's a good change in perception. 81% of them said, yeah, you know, I have a little different view, which is awesome. And 65% changed the attitude. And so I think that's a really good, good thing. Questions on this aspect of the A&amp;I program?
Questions? Can you hear any?
It's good, I mean, we are in our, as teachers and students here in Pelican Rapids, we're so blessed to have all these different cultures. Because you can see it in how our kids treat each other. When they're just constantly immersed in different cultures, they do tend to have different empathy than I think a lot of kids in a lot of districts. So if we can share that with others, that'd be awesome. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Take it back, Becky?
All right.
Was Becky done?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought she did more.
She's nice.
She's going to take it back. All right. We move on. Mr. Nelson, you have an elementary principal, only report?
Enrollment went up again last month, up to 433 in K through six. BPK up to 44. Three-year-olds are 43, and head start is again at 34, their max. Last Thursday was our fifth and sixth grade band concert in the fine arts. Awesome job to Ms. Moan and Mr. Simmons. Fine arts was probably half to three-quarters of way full. And the students, fifth graders, first band concert, and I believe there's over 30 of them in band. So great night, and thank you for those guys. Want to thank Mrs. Robles for working at the elementary. She has taken a different position, but I think it's still going to come back and sub when she's able to. So thank her for her years of service. And we hired Matty Thompson as a parent at the elementary, starting, I think, next week. So on Friday is a fourth through sixth grade ski trip to Andy's Tower Hills. Doesn't feel like ski weather, but they've been making snow. So they said they're fully open, ready to go, and excited to have us. So the weather looks great. It's great for skiing at 20 below. So it'll be a great day, and hopefully they all come back healthy. Elementary and high school have been in a little contest, raising money for the Viking Boutique and the Food Shelf. As of this afternoon, the elementary has raised $2,018. We have a slight lead over the high school. The end of the contest will end on Friday. But the real winners is the Food Shelf and the Viking Boutique as getting merchandise in, money in for both of those programs. So thank all the families that have contributed to these organizations in the little competition between elementary and high school. So, activities, winter sports are just really getting going. Next Wednesday, there's interviews for the Section 6A. Chuck Ebert, who has been running that, is retiring at the end of the year. So we have five interviews next Wednesday. And we'll see what happens there. But so next year, there will be a new person running all the Section 6A tournaments as Chuck Ebert is retiring. And this year, we got a checkback for over $6,500 from the section for tournaments that goes back to our fund, refund. So our section is one of the sections that does really well in the state. That means we have good attendance at tournament games. And we by far give the most money back section-wide compared to any other section in the state. Chuck said he thinks he should have gotten more money, so not as much money was back. But so it'll probably be nice to get that. And it's nice that our activities are well supported by the people in the communities. I think there's 42 schools that are in Section 6A in our section. And everyone gets, money back depends on how many activities you participate in. So the more activities you're in, the bigger your checking up act was. So I think Pequot Lakes get the most because they have their most more activities than anyone else. So, any questions?
Thank you, Harri, thank you. Ms. Janaszewski?
Student enrollment is about even, we're down one student. Similar to elementary, we have fall band and choir concerts. I really enjoyed the choir concerts last song. It was Carry the Light, it was kind of a play on our Be the Light theme this year, but it was, it was really, really nice. Thank you to Grinch, Mr. Brugman, and his student foot leaders in rallying the high school during the Bigfoot Challenge. We are slightly behind the elementary, but we have some tricks, I think, that we might pull in.
Maybe on the 33-year drought.
I hope you do.
Safe routes to school update. We've been approved to start the bidding process for our bike fleet. So this week, I sent out solicitations for bids from three vendors. We're hoping to get 40 bikes to use in grades three through eight. It is a slow process with lots of steps, but we are moving forward. A preview to our staff development day on January 15th. We'll have a lighthouse team meeting. I mentioned this before, but we're continuing with our leadership portfolio talk, grade seven planning meeting. Mrs. Royce and I met with the press, and we have a draft ready for the weekly planner for grade seven. So we're going to start that semester two with them. We'll have PLCs, BLT meetings. And then, believe it or not, we'll start planning department meetings and then for next school year. Our staff meeting, we typically do a continue, change, and stop. It's just a time for staff to kind of talk about what's going well, what we need to figure out. Mrs. Lage had a, she attended a workshop for LGBTQ plus students. And so she's going to represent to our staff and just give us some nice diversity training for them. And then also, we will be looking over the course offering survey that I'm going to send out to students, teachers, and the community here within the next couple of weeks. I just want to have, our BLT met today, and I want to give them a chance to kind of review what it looks like. Some fun Be the Light things, the crew panel for juniors and seniors, as Mr. Korf mentioned. That was boots on the ground from Mrs. Lage and Mrs. Orsgrin. Students had the chance to go to four different sessions, so they rotated. It was a session with on-the-job type training, or certificate type training, two-year degree, bachelor's degree, and an advanced degree. And I think it was fun for students to see how many Pelican Rapids people were in the panel, and just kind of see what's, what can come after, after high school as a This was new this year. We had Raul and then Zep come in and present to our sophomores and juniors before either one of the panels or the fair, just to kinda talk about what to expect, to help them prompt some questions for both those events. We have winter week coming up next week. Student council has planned some fun dress-up days, and then they are selling candy grabs during lunchtime. Um, let's see. Also, our CNA students completed their clinical hours. Uh, so thank you to Mrs. Linus and Mrs. Peterson for, um, helping them work through that on the weekend. Upcoming, um, next Thursday, we are gonna continue with our tradition of PM activities for students, so periods five, six, and seven. They will get to choose an activity to do, hosted by a staff member. And then I found out today that they are going to have a concert from one of our student bands to end the, end the day before they go off for winter break, in the way of winter break. Quarter two will end shortly after we come back, and then we will have teacher workshops on the fifteenth that I mentioned before. Questions?
Student reps couldn't make it tonight, so we are on to Mr. Martinez, finance report.
She went number two. Now Laura's trying to compete for how many times she stands up here, because I think she feels that I have ahead on our race. That's gonna happen this spring. I don't know if you guys heard of that.
Yeah, when's that happening?
We're both, uh, sixth grade tripping.
Oh, so we think I'm on.
Absolutely.
Okay. I've been thinking about that. You've not seen any triple pictures lately, so tell me in your opinion.
Well, I learned that, uh, that also will fool you. Trying to stay ahead here. I'm playing psychologically.
The mayor's also going to race one of the students. Maybe she should set that all up at the same time.
It'll be off school, girl.
Okay. Alright, treasures report. Uh, treasure report for the month of November. A pretty good month in terms of all the activity that happened. We started our investment account with six million dollars. Received four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in state aid, uh, of which I pulled five hundred thousand, uh, to meet our expenditures down below. Um, keep going to the left. So total ending balance in our investment account was just a little over six million dollars. Again, pretty healthy investment account. Uh, in terms of our cash flow, um, if you scroll to the left, uh, in term, in terms of our cash flow, we started the month with seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in our checking account, of which, uh, we had, uh, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in deposit, five hundred of which came from, where's that, Trev? Where's the stick?
Right here.
Right here.
Locks off, please. Great, great. Thank you.
Anybody have one of those little hand pullers?
A finger puller.
So, uh, yep, so.
Do you want me to make it bigger?
That's alright.
That'd be helpful.
Okay. Accounts payable accounted for seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Uh, payroll was four hundred and eighty-two. Uh, payroll was a little higher than normal. Um, that has to do with us paying all of our, of law coaches. So that's why you see that there. Um, at the end of the month, uh, we had total cash on hand, two hundred and sixty-three for total cash between checking account and investments of six point three million dollars. Any questions on our cash flow statement? Okay, we'll move on to page number two. Uh, page number two is our journal, um, our journals that we do to balance the month end. Um, as you can see, I did a journal entry for ninety-five cents. That had to do with a check error when you cleared the bank. Um, I, uh, the bank accidentally, uh, paid more than what the check was written out for. There's nothing we can do, so just adjust our books. Alright, uh, we'll go down, and then it's all the payables that run through our school district. Again, if you need any justification for those payables, uh, please, uh, contact me, and we will provide backup information for that. Um, that is the treasures report for the month of November. A couple of other things that you're gonna see in the agenda today that I wanna discuss. First one being to approve and accept the fiscal audit for twenty-two, twenty-three, to her, uh, court, uh, courtney enrichment. I gave you guys the audit presentation. A couple of things, just to provide a little bit of context on what she was talking about, um, in regards to the findings. So again, the findings are things that, um, that when they're going through the audit, they, they, they find and they give us a correct action plan to get better. Um, and she talked about the three findings that we received from, or for just in general, were the preparation of financial statements. And again, very common, we're hiring that third-party CPA firm to create our financials. I just find it funny that they always write you up for it. Um, second one, material journal entries. Um, this one always cracks me up because they know that at the end of the year, we have to write journal entries to balance to what the state is telling us that we need to balance to. But they write you up, just funny. And then they also tell you, oh, you need to adjust this, and they write you up for that. So. And then the third one was segregation of duties. Again, very small district. We are a two-person team, myself and Emily, split the duties in our finance office. Um, you know, where you look at bigger districts like, for example, say Morehead, um, they have three incumbents and staff, a comm supervisor, and a finance director. So, uh, that's why. Uh, the one with federal awards that they talked about improper supporting documentation, that one cracks me up because the budget for this particular ESRA grant was submitted three years ago. And when we got to the year that we're actually gonna use that relief on and expense it out, the salaries changed drastically. Why? Because we had negotiations in between, right? And you try to submit that to an auditor, and in their world, that does not agree. So, again, I told them that what we put in ESRA three years ago was a projection, but they wanted to see concrete that it had to be this number. I was like, oh, we can't because I submitted that budget three years ago. So anyways, so that's where that finding came from. Then the last piece was again, um, student activity accounts. While we're wasting our books, still continuing to clean it up and keep working with advisors to make, making sure that, uh, making sure that, uh, we follow all the proper procedures. Uh, the main thing was there was, uh, we had a request for a check, um, and it had to do with, uh, I can't remember what it was, but it was missing what we received were three dollars and ninety-three cents. So that's what they mean by proper, uh, improper documentation. Other than that, A daily has been a great CPA firm to work with. Um, they provide really good services. I can always go to them when I have any questions throughout the year of any particular matter. Uh, but overall, good, clean audit. Another item that we, that is in your agenda to approve is the superintendent's agreement. Um, over the course of the last two, three months, uh, myself, John, and Anna met with Mr. Corf to talk about, uh, his upcoming contract that is gonna expire at the end of this, uh, this fiscal year. So we sat down with him, listened to his, uh, request, and then we opened up the door for negotiation. Overall, it went pretty good. We've met twice in which we, um, we reached a, uh, a proposed agreement that, uh, we met with a finance committee, um, to discuss the financial impact. And overall, finance committee was definitely in favor of it. Uh, some of the things that, uh, we talked about in regards to the superintendent contract was, uh, we knew that we were severely behind in the salary, um, the salary aspect of it, so we had to do a market adjustment for that. Um, other than that, uh, very, very similar, uh, salary increase on year two and three to what teachers received. Um, really the main point, um, of discussion, uh, that we introduced to this particular new, uh, three-year superintendent agreement was a severance benefit and then a retirement benefit that, um, amongst my circle appears, it's something that is being negotiated in the majority of the suit contracts. Uh, it's kind of a, a hot topic. Uh, we started doing with our teachers as well. We negotiated something similar for our teachers, um, also with our principals, um, and now with our superintendents. Uh, but, uh, overall, very pleasant conversations, very pleasant negotiations. Um, we've done a lot of the analytical work to make sure that it fits within our budget, that it fits with our financial means. Um, and it does. I'm very confident to tell you guys that, uh, that we can afford, um, the contract. Otherwise, I wouldn't be up here presenting and giving you guys my recommendation to approve it. Um, with that said, um, I'll entertain. Any questions?
Any questions? We're good.
Thank you so much.
Four hundred and ninety-four thousand. Nineteen dollars, thirty-two cents.
Yeah, two cents.
Mr. Corf?
First item is, uh, multi-use building update. And since we have Mr. Steves here, we'll have him give us the latest update on the multi-use building.
You're glad you brought me up there?
No, he's, he's.
Um, it's moving along. Uh, seems like it's, it's slow, and it is, but, um, like everything else, they, uh, been waiting on a few products to wrap up, like the exterior. But that exterior now is ninety-nine percent done. Um, electricians were there today, uh, hooking up the outside lights. Uh, plumbers were, have been there, heating people. Um, they're getting very close to getting the heated, uh, heat on up there. Um, the next part will be to, uh, get the walls finished. They wanna put the, we're gonna put F, what's called FRP panel on the walls. Um, it's like the dairy board. Um, that goes on before then, the plumbing fixtures and finishes go on, other finishes. So that, that will be the next step, um, in the construction phase, and then plumbing will finish, partitions, and stuff like that. So, um, we're going to try to focus on getting that warming house going. Um, it hasn't been conducive to making ice anyway, so it's worked out very well in our favor. So, um, Mr. Corf and I have been talking about, uh, January-ish timeframe for that. Well, I just got a call from the city yesterday wondering how we're gonna make ice up there on the, it's not flat. And I just, I told them, well, the streets are icy, um, all winter, so I'm sure we can do it. It's moving along. It's getting very nice. There will be a few things in the spring or the summer, like the Johnson Martin sign. Um, we have that all painted. It's been powder-coated. The lettering's all been, um, freshened up. Uh, so we will have to fit that in there and get that done. And then we also had, uh, received a grant, um, for some bike racks. They're the, just the rounded ones, the new style individual. Um, they will get put in, and a bike repair station, and stuff like that. So, but it will, it will be ready, uh, definitely for spring sports. And that will be really nice, cause I, do we host such? Subsection, subsection? Yeah, we'll host that again. So that's always a big event. So, yeah, it's gonna be very nice.
Thank you. Okay, enrollment, uh, in, uh, December here, we're at eight hundred and thirty-five students, K through twelve, and then with our early, uh, childhood programs, we're at nine hundred and fifty-six, which is great. Uh, committee meeting, we have a policy committee meeting here following the school board meeting. Uh, weather emergency schedules, just a reminder, the process of this is that we meet, um, Mr. Steves, Mr. Rest of the bus company, we meet in the mornings if there's any, um, icy roads, weather coming in, snow coming in. Um, and we discuss the, how the roads are and the forecast. So that's how we make our decisions. If, um, if it's closed or a two-hour late start, and if it's during the day, then we get together and have the same discussion if we need to, um, get an early out. Just remember, um, sometimes maybe Howie Fifty-Nine looks good. However, we got a lot of backroads, um, that fill up, and, um, that's, those are the words that they're concerned about, um, when we have bus transportation. School board agenda items, just a few things that weren't, uh, touched on. One, under, uh, business items, B, resolution establishing combined polling places. This is a yearly approval. This is a resolution for using City Hall for the school district elections. They're not held on the day of a statewide election. So we do that every year. And then, uh, under business items, F and G. Uh, policies for F is the first and second readings, very minor changes, uh, reviewed and recommended by the policy committee and also MSBA. And then G is a first reading because they, either are new policies or have a lot of changes, and they've been reviewed and recommended for approval by the policy committee and MSBA recommended. Upcoming events, we got winter break coming up. Um, and then we got regular schools, uh, regular school board meeting, January third, and then January eleventh, twelfth is MSBA conference. I think the majority of school board members have contacted Mrs. Evans if they're attending. So, any questions? Seeing that policies for G and H, we must add, we added something to that. You mentioned F. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Okay. G and H. Okay, then we have a resolution to read about.
Yeah.
When we get to that. So we can move on. Okay, we'll move on to the consent items. Item A, approval for meeting minutes, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meeting. D, financial claims, November bills. C, treasures report. D, accept donations. We have student accounts, one hundred dollars for our clinic, Viking Boutique, one hundred dollars for our clinic. To the high school scholarship fund, in memory of Lyle Peterson, class of sixty-seven, fifteen dollars, Grant Fraser. To the high school scholarship fund, in memory of Greg, excuse me, Ginger Coleman, twenty-five dollars, Bonnie Mose. Be the Light Scholarship in memory of Jeff Booth, fifty dollars, Dennis and Stacy Heidi. Be the Light Scholarship in memory of Ryan Severson, two thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars for memorials. Viking Boutique, six hundred dollars from Egg Country Farm Credit Services. Item E, personnel, approve the resignation of Adriana.
Robles.
Robles. As part-time special education paraprofessional at Viking Elementary. And approve the hire of Madison Thompson as pre-K special education paraprofessional at Viking Elementary. We have motion for the consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion by Stacy. Do we have a second?
No, second.
Second by Ann. Discussion on consent items? There is no discussion. All those in favor, approve the consent items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same. Motion carries. Business items, approve, approve, item A is approval of the MinDOT temporary right to construct. Do we just need a motion for that? No.
I make a motion to, uh, for the approval of the MinDOT temporary right to construct.
Okay. Motion for Linda, do we have a second?
No, second.
By Molly. Any discussion on the motion? There is no discussion. All those in favor, approve the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same. Motion carries. We have a resolution establishing combined polling places.
I need to read this.
So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ann.
No, second.
Second by Stacy. Okay, this is a resolution, so just, uh... Resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designations, designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for our school district elections, not held on the day of the statewide election. Be resolved by the Board of Independent School District, five forty-eight, State of Minnesota, follows pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section two zero five, A, point eleven. The precincts and polling places for school district election are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of a school district which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. Board hereby confirms these post precincts and polling places so established by municipalities pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section two zero five, A, point one-one. The board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections, not held on the day of the statewide election. These combined polling places must be a polling place that has been designated by a county or municipality. Following combined polling places are established to serve precincts specified for all school districts, special and general elections, not held on the same day as the statewide election. And that combined polling places, Pelican, the City Hall, three fifteen North Broadway, Pelican Rapids, Minnesota, five six five seven two. And it just lists all of our townships that have our school district. So this is a resolution. Following combined polling places are established to serve precincts specified for all school districts, special and general elections not held on the same day as the statewide election. And that combined polling places, Pelagra, City Hall, three fifteen North Broadway, Pelagra, Minnesota, five six five seven two. And it just lists all of our townships that have our school district. So this is a resolution. Greg, do you resolve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Yes, Brenda?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Approve and accept the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three audit. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and accept the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit.
Motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion on approving and accepting the twenty-two, twenty-three audit? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Approve the levy limitation and certification report, two thousand twenty-three, payable, two thousand twenty-four. For four million one hundred ninety-four dollars, excuse me, let me back up. Four million one hundred ninety-four thousand nineteen dollars and thirty-two cents. Who wants to make that motion? They probably just couldn't make a motion.
Yes, for what you just said.
I will make a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving my motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Approve the world's best workforce summary and achievement and integration progress report.
I'll make a motion to approve the world's best workforce summary and achievement and integration progress report.
Motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Item F, approve the superintendent's agreement for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-seven. I will make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion?
I do have discussion. I sent some questions into Rudy and just being a new school board member, remembering phase one of the training was to know the contract and doing some research. The fifteen percent increase, as Rudy, Mr. Martinez had mentioned, is something that seems a little off compared to the percent of increase that our staff and teachers and non-certified staff, support staff have received. So that was one piece that I was just, and I think Greg and I may be the only ones who haven't been, just because I looked at the finance committee agenda too, it did, it just said budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, the last meeting. So I, I'm not sure when the item was that the contract was discussed either. So I'm just trying to soak, like, I was just trying to get all the information straight before, before making an informed decision. And I just wanted to bring that forward in the fifteen percent increase that first year. And so a question that I had was the, like, comparisons to size and, size of districts and experience of other salaries. Are they, do we have that in comparison? That was one question I had.
So Ann and I met with Mr. Martinez. So we did look at comparable school districts. So that's how we came up with the amount. So that'd be a market adjustment. We also have to take into consideration, you know, years of experience on the district too. So, Ann, you got anything to add?
I don't, I don't know. No, we were looking at the numbers from Mr. Martinez. Will make in that decision.
I think when I looked at, I mean, when he shared that and looked at the numbers, that the districts were extremely bigger or, and or, like, the years of experience of superintendent were very different. So I just, I'm just coming from a perspective of asking the question of just ensuring because what we established now sets a precedence for down the road. And so that we're all just on the same page with that. So that, that was one question that I had. The other question was the full metaphor and dental after fifteen years and how we calculate that. So asking Mr. Martinez, like, how much do we need to set aside as a district for that? To, to be able to ensure that that happens? And essentially, my calculations were that we'd be paying two insurance premiums for, for quite a while, essentially. But when I did ask MSBA for their guidance on that, they, they didn't say that that was common language, so I just, that was another question that I had.
Okay. And anything to add or?
Yeah, so when Ms. Ramirez and I met, we did provide a full disclosure of all the different districts that we surveyed to get all the data. So it wasn't just districts significantly bigger than us. There was actually an array of tables going from the largest district in our area, which is Ferguson Falls, to the smallest district in our area, which is Rattse. So literally, the comparison was right, big up broad. It wasn't just bigger districts, it was a very well thought-through comparison. When we looked at comparisons in terms of, when we looked at comparison in terms of school districts that are size, we always look at Barnesville, we always look at Razzie, right? We look at similar school districts when you look at per pupil count. Now, one of the things that I expressed to Ms. Ramirez was that there is no perfect per pupil funding formula. So just because a school district is significantly bigger doesn't mean that that soup is entitled to significantly more compensation. There's so many factors that come into play. That is the tenure of the candidate within the school district, the success, the current superintendent evaluation amongst many other factors. So my question really even falls back on the board, which is, you know, what was his evaluation like? Because to my understanding was it was a pretty favorable, that this guy is doing a significantly well job. So when we are negotiating with the, when we were negotiating with Mr. Corf, that was brought up, right? What, what was his evaluation like? So to my understanding is that it was very positive. Now, take into account the years of experience that he has as an administrator and now for years as a superintendent, we wanted to, one, compensate them fairly for what his peers are making in the area. Now, all those salaries that we looked at were actually from, were currently, are currently being negotiated. So we don't know what the current, current ones are going to be end up like. We just wanted to be, one, marketable, and two, we wanted to keep a good candidate in our house. I've been here for six years and I've had four superintendents. We need stability.
I'm not sure I understand.
Siri, we need stability.
Sorry, Siri.
Okay? So, so that is.
I found this on the web.
So that is, that is one of the, one of the reasonings. Now, in terms of, in terms of the, the percentage on how we, we looked at all of our different contracts, there's different thoughts of, thoughts of process, right? One of them, when you look at a teachers' union contract, you're looking at an entire pool of people, right? So your cost of scale are going to be significantly larger. Where when you look at a superintendent, you're looking at one individual. We also look at years of education, right? The majority of our staff doesn't have necessarily the education and experience that Mr. Corf does. So therefore, his market adjustment, in my professional opinion, is more than justified. Third of all, again, we go back to the merit of who he is as a character. And to me, he has done an exceptionally well job within the school district. The piece that you talk about in terms of, when we look at the two pieces that MSBA thinks that is not common language, I don't believe MSBA has all the superintendent contracts, and I know that because I also contacted them. So MSBA is a good guidance when it comes to language, but not necessarily the process. So I'm glad you reached out to them, phenomenal. You should, that is your due diligence as a board member. But to simply say that, that you're uneasy or you're not comfortable with some of the language that's being introduced because it's tying your hands as a board member, I would say it's an incentive that in the event Mr. Corf decides to leave tomorrow, we get significantly better candidates, right? So with what we put in our contract, it can't always be seen as a consequence. I would almost say it should be seen as a reward.
So just a couple of things, thanks Rudy, a couple of things that, I do believe that each contract is negotiated per candidate. So it's just if, you know, if it were this contract for Mr. Corf, you know, it would be a completely different contract for a, a different candidate in that example. And I, I, I go back to the teachers and the staff and like, I mean, there, we have phenomenal teachers. As Laura just said earlier too, I mean, like, there, we have great teachers doing wonderful things. That, that isn't necessarily a reason why we can't, you know, we can't give them a fifteen percent increase. So I'm just like system, I'm a systems thinker. And wanted to have the opportunity to put that, my thinking in the space around some of the things I was just uncomfortable with and not knowing down the road then, you know, what position I could put the district in. So that is, that's, that's where my questions are coming from. I, like you said, still new in this, so, you know, went back to phase one training and what, what we learned then and doing the research and, and just coming at it with a system, system lens. So.
Because when we looked at it, it's, it's tough to compare apples to apples sometimes because some employees might have money tucked in another place versus the shown wage. So we were aware that some of the other districts were going to be negotiating soon. So looking at the market, we felt this was probably where things are going to end up. And just what we see around the state, you have districts this size, smaller districts where it's a stepping stone for a superintendent to stay a couple of years and move on. I don't think that's the right thing for our district. I believe it shows confidence in Mr. Corf's ability. Part of the reason why I came to agree with you here, I trust my business manager or our business manager, so.
But the other piece, and I said too, is I think a few months ago, we did have the, like, what's our enrollment projections? And if, you know, a few of these things are based on per pupil funding. And if we have projected, what our projected enrollment is looking like now, again, that, you know, there's many factors and things that, that can change, but we use that in calculations. That we need to be considering that too in, in our expenditures. So. I'd look to Rudy for advice on enrollment and projections here.
Yeah, I mean, that's a loaded question, right? Because when we do look at enrollment, the report that Ms. Ramirez is talking in regards to, it was a report that we presented two, three months ago regarding the census enrollment. The one piece that is not disclosed is that we did say that it is a very preliminary census because a lack can happen between zero and four, right? Families moving in, families moving out. The other factor that happens when you look at a long-range plan is your funding formula increases, right? So even though you drop two, three students, that funding, funding formula increases, so it almost offsets each other. When I present a budget to you guys, when I do negotiations, I don't look for the, the, the subjective cast, the cost that we're going to assume one year. My training in fiscal planning analysis is to oversee a minimum of five-year plan. And that is something that I present to you guys in every particular budget. So when I give you guys the board of confidence that one, the district can afford it, regardless of our enrollment projections we projected a couple of months ago with our census number, I can tell you guys that I can afford it, okay? Or the district can afford it. Secondly, you guys just had the audit. And if you guys remember, the, the significant amount of investment that the district ended on, does anybody remember that number? Seven million dollars, right? So one of the pieces that I've done for the district significantly is that I've, I've made the money work for the district itself. So those, that particular investment, that pool of money just doesn't sit there. It actually generates significant amount of interest and dividends for the school district. So I'm giving you guys the board of confidence that, one, the contract is very well thought, thought through. Two, the contract is, is being cussed at and vetted up and down. When I do work, I don't like to do work halfway. I engage other bright people. So when we look at even a severance package, I involve our actuaries to constitute a penny. Okay? The other piece that I think is, the bigger pieces here that we're discussing publicly is, 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 is the character of Mr. Corf. And I personally and professionally believe that he is the right person for the job and he is significant of these benefits that we're proposing forward.
So, and I just wanted, I wanted to go on rare and say that, like, that was, that your character is not, that's not a part of this conversation at all. So I would take the individual out and just, just looking at the, the contract total. So I, I just want to declare that it's not an individual thing. It's purely on the, the numbers and the, the objective data and even what was presented in the truth and taxation about, you know, the state has a ceiling of three percent increase, no matter what inflation is. So this isn't just one-time funding, like, this is, this is projected out many years, so.
Anything else?
Just, just for clarification, I, Stacy, I don't think you, I didn't know, maybe it wasn't misunderstood, but he had referenced my name on like not having certain information. I didn't have any questions with regard, and I'm not suggesting you're not in support of the agreement, but I just wanted to clarify for the rest of the board that I didn't have any questions at all regarding the contract.
I regret, I didn't mean to imply you.
I know, I know.
I was looking at finance committee and what was involved in the conversation, so.
And I mentioned that, knowing that, that that's how you meant it, I just wanted to say it for myself.
Anything else? Okay. Hearing no more discussion. All those in favor of approving the superintendent's agreement for twenty-four, two thousand twenty-seven? Start over, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-seven, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same?
Aye, based on my discussion.
Now, motion carries. Do we have to read them, do we have to make motions on each one, or can we lock them together?
Nope, they're all together.
Who would like to do that? Make a motion.
I'll make a motion. Dr. Reddama?
Whoever you'd like to.
I make a motion to approve the first and second readings of the following policies. Seven oh one, establishment and adoption of school board, school district budget. Seven oh one point one, modifications of school district budget. Seven oh two, accounting. Seven oh three, annual audit. Seven oh four, development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets and a fixed asset accounting system. Seven oh five, investments. Seven oh six, acceptance of gifts. Seven oh seven, transportation of special ed education students. Seven oh eight, transportation of non-public school students. Seven oh nine, student transportation safety policy. Seven ten, extracurricular transportation. Seven eleven, video recording on school buses. Seven twelve, video surveillance other than buses. Seven thirteen, student activity accounting. Seven fourteen, fund balances. Seven twenty, vending machines. Seven twenty-one, uniform grant guidance policy regarding federal revenue sources. Eight oh one, equal access to school facilities. Nine oh one, community education. Nine oh two, use of school district facilities and equipment. Nine oh three, visitors to school district buildings and sites. And nine oh six, community notification of predatory offender.
That's good. Motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion on the policies, first and secondary? Here we know discussion, all those in favor of approving Brenda's motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Those policies are approved. Item H, approve the first reading of the following policies.
I can make a motion for that.
You don't have to read that one.
Okay. Do you want me to read the, the?
Go ahead.
Okay, so approve first readings of the following policies. Six twenty-one, literacy and re-acts. Eight oh two, disposition of obsolete equipment and material. And eight oh five, waste reduction and recycling.
Okay, we have a motion by Stacy, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Greg. Any discussion on the motion? Here we know discussion, all those in favor approving the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Okay, we have upcoming meetings, January third, that's a variation from our typical date, we are reorganization meeting. Regular meeting at six P M. And MSB leadership conference, January eleventh through the twelfth. And February twenty-first is a regular meeting at six P M. You have a motion to adjourn? I'll move to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg. Any discussion? Here we know discussion, all those in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Adjourn. Thanks, everybody.